Good evening. The time is now six thirty-one PM. I will call the June second, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next agenda item is roll call of members and the determination of quorum. Let the record reflect that there are six counselors, seven counselors present in person with one Carlos Jennings online. Carlos, could you speak just so we can see if we can hear you?
Testing one, two. Can you hear me?
Thank you, counselor. All right. But this meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law, and copies of the agenda are located at the back of the room. Also, for any citizens wishing to speak during citizens' comments, please note that our citizens' comments are limited to three minutes. And there is a sign-in sheet located at the back if you would like to sign in. The next agenda item is comments of common council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any comments this evening?
Mr. President, I have one.
Yes, Counselor Freeman.
I just wanted to acknowledge the administration for the letter of notification that they sent to CSX about the train tracks that need to be fixed. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I have a comment. Several years ago, the Common Council allotted money to be used for close to five acres of pollinator-friendly plantings in the city of Lawrence. And this year, these gardens are doing great. So if you want some great smells and sights, stop by one. And you can look for, at this time, the hairy beard tongue. Okay?
Mr. President, I have a couple of things to say. I've been the liaison between the Sunset Cove HOA and Citizens Energy over the past few days, trying to get a water leak repaired at the edge of the yard of seven nine seven four Glenview Drive. It's off Fox Road. A technician came out today to assess the leak, to assess the leak and determine responsibility. We will be able to call tomorrow to get the report to find out what is next. I did a site visit this morning, and it was very clear where the water was coming from, right at the corner of the bottom of their driveway and rolling down the hill, down the street to the corner, of the corner of the property there. And I'm almost positive this will be resolved without getting our DPW involved, which is key. Second note, I have a constituent in Crossing, the Crossing South neighborhood, which is just south of Eighty-Sixth Street, requesting that, I guess you can, it's a footbridge? Not really sure what to call it. They are looking to get that repaired. It's at the front of their neighborhood. I scoped that out this morning, too, and it is, in fact, very splintered, broken in places, and dry-rotted, as she said. The bridge itself is paved all the way out. And then on either section where the sidewalk goes through the neighborhood, there's these wooden sections, and that's what she's referring to. And it goes over a creek, and there's like a really high drop and everything. The neighborhood was built like thirty-three years ago, so I'm assuming this was put in at that time. So it is definitely in need of repair of some variety. So I'm going to be in contact with DPW about that. And then lastly, I spoke with the HOA members in Crystal Point over the weekend, and they are requesting another always-stop intersection to cut down on the speeding through their neighborhood. Mr. DeSimone told me that Arvion Renee was at their board meeting most recently, and this was her recommendation, and it's at the intersection of Bent Oak Lane, Briar Hill Lane. And so I am going to explore that, and hopefully, Mr. President, you will throw that in the committee, and I'll take care of it from there. And that is all I have.
Mr. President, thank you. I think it was last meeting, we had a couple ladies from Harrison Park came and spoke about the kids on the little motorcycles and also in Lawrence Park. And anyhow, I got a call a couple of days ago from one of the ladies, Mrs. Morgan, and she wanted me to personally thank Chief of Staff Goodnight and the Police Department. She said that the situation is much, much better, and she certainly appreciates the effort. The other thing I have is, a few weeks ago, I ran into a couple of street department workers that were surveying a massive hole or crater at Van Cleve and Forty-Sixth Street. This hole is constantly being hit by these big semi trucks, fuel trucks carrying heavy loads of fuel back to the oil company. And it is getting bigger by the day. They told me three weeks ago they were going to address this hole, and it's now probably twice as big as it was then. So I guess, do I need to put in a request, or is it on the docket? And if someone could look into that and let me know, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? The next agenda item is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-
Still moved.
Thank you, Counselor Wells. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. We will now proceed with a roll call vote. I'll start with Counselor Giles.
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Kramer?
Aye.
Counselor Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Crone?
Aye.
Counselor Mazur?
Aye.
Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that we have unanimous decision to approve the minutes. The next agenda item is the signing of vouchers and approval of claims and the authorizations of payment. Do we have a motion to approve the signing of vouchers, approval of claims?
Still moved.
Thank you, Counselor Jennings. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Crone. We'll now proceed with a roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Kramer, yes. Counselor Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Crone?
Aye.
Counselor Mazur?
Aye.
Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that we have a seven-to-one vote. The next agenda item is reports of committees. Do we have any reports from our committees this evening? All right, we'll move right along to the next agenda item, which is unfinished business, for which we also have none. We'll move to new business. The next agenda item we have is to consider the new business tonight, rezoning petition twenty-five, Zone oh-one. Madam Clerk, could you please read that petition number, address, and request for the record?
Petition number two-five-dash-z-o-n-dash-zero-zero-one. Address is seventy-eight forty-eight Pendleton Pike, Lawrence, Indiana, four-six-two-two-six. Currently, the zoning for this parcel is split into C-five and I-three. It is the desire of the owner to have the entire parcel zoned C-five.
This rezoning petition has an advertised public hearing that has been noticed for tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing. The floor is now open for the petitioner to present the rezoning petition to the Common Council. Petitioner, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note that your presentation must not exceed ten minutes. You may now present.
Thank you. Thomas Potchmidt, six-seven-three-one, Winock Drive, Indianapolis. This property, as mentioned, is split between an I-three and a C-five. It goes right in between them, right in the middle of the building. And the owner would like to make it all C-five. That would give him more flexibility on what he could use the property for. However, I guess there's a change that may be coming down the road as far as an overlay, that they may be changing all the C-fives to C-four in that area, which the owner does not want to have C-four. And I don't know if the I-three is affected by that or not, or if that was just going to stay I-three. If it's going to stay I-three, then he wants to withdraw the zoning request because we feel that the C-five is not going to be approved because of the overlay that's going to happen.
You say that again? I didn't quite understand that. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, she, yeah, yeah, this is coming secondhand from Renee. So I'm trying to explain the best I know. I'm still confused on it myself, but...
Excuse me just for a second. Isn't some of this with the, and Renee will probably be able to answer this, too, with this Trades District have a bearing on this property?
I'm sorry?
The Trades District?
No.
This isn't part of the Trades District? Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, thank you. Yeah, this was the old vehicle sales place there, right by the new gas station there, the...
Right, I know where it is.
Oh, okay.
Where the old Ford used to be.
Yeah.
Eons ago.
Yeah, yeah. So with the situation, and I don't know exactly what to go, how to go with it at this point because I'm not sure what the situation is for the future. So until I get that cleared up, and I sent Renee an email last week, but I'm sure that was not the only email that she got this last week. So I'm sure she hasn't had a chance to respond to my email, but I was going to ask her what was exactly going on with that so when I got to this meeting, I would be more prepared.
Okay, so Tom, you come from the engineering firm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Omega Engineering. I represent the owner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because that's what, because most of the time when somebody represents the owner, they're a lawyer, and they understand the zoning part, so that's why I was confused.
Right, right.
You know, no offense, but that's typically, you know.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. So that means there's going to be a lot of built, so if we change the zoning, I don't know if I'm putting, jumping so far ahead, but if he has an engineering firm representing here, that allows, that makes me believe that there's going to be significant changes done to that building and property?
That's right. I'm an engineer, and I did a building design that is pending right now due to the zoning issue that we have. If it was all C-five, we wouldn't be able to get a building permit for the drawings that I submitted to the city. But when I submitted-
So these are the drawings, are these the drawings you submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so, so question I got, and I'm sorry if I'm jumping, so current plan is to have a salon, a laundromat, and a convenience store in, in the existing, to the existing use of an auto repair shop. So if I understand correctly, can't you do all those things in the C-four?
Yes, I do believe you can.
So what can't you do in a C-five, what can't you do in a C-four, the C-five?
They're, they become undecided on what they wanted to do with the building.
There you go. So that's where I was getting at.
Yes.
When you tell me you want a salon, a laundromat, a convenience store, I don't believe you.
That is what they originally wanted to do.
No, I want to know what they want today because you want me to change something.
Oh, well, they were, they were thinking about having the opportunity to do-
I don't want them to think. I need to know if I'm approving because this is for my community, right? So I need to know if it's going to be a salon, a laundromat, or what, I'm going to tell you what we don't want. So I'm going to go tell you, because I'm, this is, I'm Giles, it's my district, you know, because I'm just, so. I'll tell you what we don't want, and I do know what you can't get in the C-five, that you can't get in the C-four, we don't want it. We do not want another car lot. So you will not get another car lot approved here.
Okay.
Okay, so with the C-four, what you've written that you want, that you, that, because I can't read minds, and you're not even the guy. So I honestly, I'm not trying to be rude, since you don't know, how about he comes back and tell us what he knows?
Well, if it could stay I-three, then he could still have vehicle sales in the I-three part.
Well, that's why I'm not approving I-three either.
Well, the I-three, it's already I-three.
Well, then there'll be no change, so then I guess you leave it at the I-three.
That's, that's right.
But then I think we might be trying to figure out a way to change that. I would imagine. We do not want, tell your owner for certain that if he wants to sell cars in the city of Lawrence, he needs to find another place to do business.
Okay, I'll tell him.
And if, and if you don't want to tell, and actually, and to be honest with you, I'm going to advise my counsel not to do anything until he comes in here and tells me on the record what his plans is for because it's my responsibility to be able to look at my constituents and be able to say what I'm approving.
Right.
Right? I mean, that's only fair. And so, and, and if, and, well, I can tell them what we don't want, what we've been trying to, to, you know, clean our city up with.
Right.
And so it's unfortunate that if he buys the building, or he owns the building, or whatever the case, and the I-three works, then that's his right. But I know that I'm not going to do anything that's going to make it stronger for him and to his detriment, I'm willing to do something to make it not happen for him.
Could I ask a quick question, too, please? The lot, the empty lot that's to the east of this property or this building, is it still a part? This parcel, are they together still? Because I know they used to be at one time.
I believe that they are. Oh, they're not? Okay.
They are not.
According to the drawing, it's not.
The empty lot with the little- Yeah, got like, Corin owns that now.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That answers my question.
So I guess we'll just leave it the way it is, then. The I-three would give them more flexibility on what they could do with the building, I suppose.
So why did they want to, why did they want to move to a C-five?
Just to have the flexibility of being able to do vehicle sales, I guess.
I thought you said the I-three, okay, here she comes. Let's get someone up here notes.
Yes, please, Renee, thanks. I appreciate it greatly.
Okay, so the current zoning is C-five and I-three. It was previously Bob Warman's, and then it became a CarMax, and it's been used as car sales for decades. Half of the building is zoned I-three, and the other half is C-five. The uses they are proposing, the laundromat, the convenience store, and the salon, are not able to be used in an I-three zoning.
Right, that makes sense.
So when they've submitted plans, I said, you can't do this in this part of the building. Zoning doesn't allow it. You have to, the highest zoning you can have is C-five for those uses. So he said, well, let's rezone it to C-five. Talking with the mayor and the redevelopment staff, we are currently working, trying to get some control over our zoning.
Right.
And this is an opportunity for us, if he's asking for a rezone, to do that without, while we have the opportunity, while it's before us. C-four allows the uses that they propose, that they submit plans for, for approval. That's why we came back and said we'd be in support of a C-four zoning because we are trying to redevelop Pendleton Pike, and part of that vision is limiting the number of used car sales lots. If we, C-five is the zoning required for that. So yes, if it stays I-three, he can use part of the property.
The short side?
Yeah.
Okay.
He cannot, he can, I mean, he can actually use the whole property for that, but we're trying to get away from that.
Oh, he could use the whole property.
It is the goal of the city to, it's like an overlay. We want to put some restrictions and do some rezoning on the property so that we can control.
So can we change this to C-four without him requesting it to be C-four?
After we get control of the zoning, there will be steps that we have to do in order to do that.
But today-
It's defined, but we can't just, like today, say, well, too bad, you have to go with the C-four zoning.
So today, he could stay I-three and use the whole property, not just the half?
I'll look at the zoning code a little closer, but I know C-five and higher, you're allowed to have auto repair, auto sales.
And I-three is higher than C-four?
And I-three is higher, yeah.
Right, but I'm just wondering, when you say half the building, is it the whole building or half?
The half that he was trying to use, the salon, the convenience store, and the laundromat, those uses weren't allowed in the C, or the I-three section.
Okay, I get it, I get it.
And most of the building is I-three.
There's auto repair in that building right now.
It's kind of hard to tell from the map, but it's kind of like really close at the C.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it'd take a little more looking at the measuring and stuff.
Do we need another convenience store, too?
And the convenience store would be allowed in a C-four. A gas station wouldn't. Again, that's why we wanted the lower zoning. We don't want another gas station here.
No, we don't.
We don't want a car lot there.
No.
We'd like, you know, the, the convenience store, we do need food over there, so that's not bad. The laundromat, people need to wash their clothes, hair salon. Auto repair is still allowed, just not auto sales. So that gives them what they were wanting and gave us the security of future uses of the property. So that's why we were suggesting a C-four. And when I talked to him before my vacation last week, they were in agreement, so.
So now it sounds that they're going to go I-three, leave it alone, so it sounds like we got another car lot?
Most likely.
Renee?
Did you have, yeah, what questions?
If you got a convenience store with no gas.
Could it be possible in this convenience store to get a little more definition as far as square footage? Would it be like the convenience store we're seeing at Race, was it called Race Track, the gas station? Would it be that, that kind of convenience store, or would this be more of a grocery store type?
They didn't specify in the plans submitted. This was just when we were reviewing for the remodel of the building.
I mean, would it be possible to-
They have to tell us what their uses are going to be, so.
But if they can't sell no gas, Rick, it's not going to be a big convenience store. It's going to be a bodega neighborhood-style candy shop.
Right, and I'm, and I wouldn't be that opposed to that, per se, but I would like-
Well, that would be allowed under the C-four.
Right.
But it's not allowed in an industrial zone, so.
The other question I also have with that, too, I'm just telling you, just let them know, with the convenience store, I'm also concerned about pedestrian traffic because where that building at, you know, where do you see your customers coming? And am I going to have kids running across, what is that, what is it, six lanes?
Sellers and Allen and Pendleton Pike.
Okay, you know, so, so then does that become an issue for me, if it's a jumping convenience store, right? So those are, I think about all of those things when we look into that, is how does it affect, and how does it improve the quality of life in the neighborhood? And does it, and does it potentially cause any other future issues potentially? As we're trying to plan and forecast the city.
Is that the end of your presentation?
I, do you have any other questions for me at this time? I can come back, I'll make you think of something.
Since you're up there, could you briefly tell us, on the second page, with the land use category, the SAPV, what do those stand for? I didn't see a key.
I'm sorry, I was on that page. Oh, okay, so the DA, the DS, the D-one, those are the zoning.
Right, no, but like down underneath there.
Oh, the As is, oh my gosh, the Ps are permitted.
Permitted, okay.
The S is a special exception. The A is accessory, and the V is a variance.
I figured V was variance.
Yeah. So P is permitted, A is accessory.
Accessory mean?
So like, you'd have to have a main use for the building, and then that's an accessory use.
Oh, okay.
So like a grocery store with a pharmacy.
Right. That'd be nice. We don't have a pharmacy on that side of the...
I'm sorry, what was S? I didn't.
S is special exception.
Special, special exception. All right, thank you so much.
Tough grammar.
I think we'll just, like, to leave it as this. I think that's probably the best way to go at this moment.
Yeah.
So you're withdrawing your petition?
Yes, yes, withdraw my petition.
Okay. Tell your owner to please consider, we really don't, this community don't want car lot. We just don't want it. He says right, but we hope that he's a responsible business owner, that we're welcoming to our community, and we do not want another car lot.
Oh, I'll mention that to him.
Especially cars ten thousand dollars or less. If he going to bring a car lot, bring something good. Maybe the people who come by could also spend money in our other stores. But we don't need another body payers.
Yeah.
Understand.
Tom, in addition to saying in here, I'll make written withdrawal.
Okay.
So that we can put it in the-
Okay, okay. We can do that.
I just wanted to come up here, so it's on record.
Yeah, thank you. Great, okay.
Seeing as how the petitioner has withdrawn their request, I will entertain a motion to deny twenty-five, Zone oh-one.
Still moved.
Thank you, Counselor Giles, second.
Carlos did it.
I'm sorry. Counselor Jennings?
And I'll second.
Second, Counselor Giles, thank you. We'll now proceed with the roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Kramer, aye. Counselor Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Crone?
Aye.
Counselor Mazur?
Aye.
Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
All right. We have denied Zone twenty-five oh-one. The next agenda item is comments of the administration. Do we have any comments in the administration this evening?
Good evening. Greg Goodnight, Chief of Staff, City of Lawrence, just a few. Just a reminder, this Thursday, June fifth, begins the tenth anniversary of the Lawrence Farmers Market. We wanted to remind you of that. Just also, we've had multiple meetings in the last few weeks of the Mayor's Housing Task Force, and I just personally wanted to thank Councilmember Giles and Councilmember Mazur for attending and participating in that. Also, the mayor is in the process of working through the Critical Response Team to improve relations within the community and the Lawrence Police Department. And all of this has led, I just want you to know, you should all be proud, has led to some positive news and positive feedback from media concerning the city of Lawrence. Tomorrow, the mayor will be a guest on Inside Indiana Business Podcast with Gary Dick. And, yeah, so finally, the mayor, in preparation, in preparation for Senate Enrolled Act One, formerly Senate Bill One, has already started preliminary budget preparations with department heads this week. And also on that note, we are conducting an internal audit, independent audit, and in show of full transparency, we will share the findings with the entire council when completed. We're speculating the end of July, first part of August. Look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goodnight. I just want to take a second to close the, the hearing for petition twenty-five, Zone oh-one. The next agenda item is citizens' comments. Citizens' comments shall be limited to three minutes. Any citizen wish to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address. We'll start with Galen Zerpak. Did I get your first name correct?
Galen Zerpak, yes. Thank you, Counsel. Galen Zerpak, I live at one-two-two-six-zero East Seventy-Fifth Street. And first of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Crone and Captain Cantrell. They actually came out to my property and looked at the issue. I'm here to formally ask the council to conduct a study or assessment. Seventy-Fifth Street between Carroll Road and Oaklandon, we get a lot of speeders on there. It's a forty mile per hour speed limit, so I'm here to ask for some kind of study or assessment. We see a lot of people speeding this time of year. It's become more noticeable. It's become a public safety issue just this past weekend. As I'm working in my front yard, I see a group of bicyclists going west on Seventy-Fifth Street down towards Oaklandon. We're seeing increased commercial traffic, semi trucks, boats, people pulling boats, travel trailers. A couple weeks ago, I saw a full-size coach tour-type bus that went and parked itself at a business on the northeast corner of Oaklandon and Seventy-Fifth, and sat there for a couple days. At that business, I live on the north side of Seventy-Fifth. We all have to cross the road to get to our mailboxes on the south side. In doing that, I'm just amazed how many people I still see going down through that Seventy-Fifth with their cell phones in their hands. So driver distraction is a, is a huge concern for me as well. We live in an area that we have deer that cross in that particular spot. A neighbor across the street has had one laying in their front yard. A neighbor next to me has had one. From Pendleton Pike to Carroll Road, the speed limit is thirty. That's McCordville, I understand that. But then it goes to forty, all the way to Indian Lake. So reducing it to thirty or thirty-five miles per hour, I understand. Just changing the speed limit is not going to change the driver behavior. We're causing them to slow down, so that's, I don't know what, what can be done to correct that. The bicyclists. When I drive, I looked at the map, the city map on your Facebook page, and it indicates that Seventy-Ninth Street is Indianapolis, and Seventy-Fifth Street is the city of Lawrence. And you folks take care of that, and it indicates- And you folks take care of that. Um, and it indicates that Seventy-Ninth Street is the main road, um, east to west. Seventy-Ninth Street ends at Oak Landon. It does not go all the way through. Uh, I, I think a study would tell you that Seventy-Fifth Street is the main thoroughfare, going from Pendleton Pike all the way down to, um, Sunnyside, for the most part. So, we do get a lot of traffic there. I drive, when I drive to work, um, I go Landon to Sixty-Third Street to Lee Road, over to Fifty-Sixth Street. I work on Fifty-Sixth Street. All the way over, all the way over to Fifty-Sixth Street is thirty-five miles per hour on those roads. So, uh, I think forty, forty miles, forty miles per hour on Seventy, on Seventy-Fifth Street is a little high still. But my biggest concern, again, is the speeding and the driver distractions that I see there. I have a strip of grass, probably, we have a tree line that goes across the front of our property, and a strip of grass probably three to four feet wide between the road and that tree line. And when I mow that grass, um, I'm always looking east. We have a hill just east of Doe Lane and Cobblestone. Coming out of my driveway, um, the biggest issue is the power company put a second power pole there close to the corner of Doe Lane. I virtually have zero visibility coming out of my driveway of traffic coming over that hill. So, again, I don't know, and, and I brought a few photographs. I don't know if that's permitted to share. If not, I can give them to, uh, Counselor Crone, and she can share them, but I brought, I got a few photographs of, uh, the, the, the safety issues that I have there. We're not just myself, but everyone along Seventy-Fifth Street, um, and the increased traffic and the people that I see going down that street. It's just, um, and again, if you look at the street, Seventy-Ninth versus Seventy-Fifth, uh, the wear and tear on Seventy-Fifth versus the wear and tear on Seventy-Ninth would give you a pretty good indication. We're seeing a lot of semis and dump trucks, um, commercial vehicles going down through there that we have not seen, uh, until really this year. So, uh, with that in mind, uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone has. Uh, and again, I have some photographs. If I can share them with you afterwards, whatever, whatever's permitted.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll speak with you afterwards soon. Next, we have Thomas Potch Schmidt. Gotcha. J.D. Mazur?
Counsel.
Mr. President, uh, it's good to see everybody, and I just wanted to let you know that, uh, Rick Carlisle went to college with Counselor Mazur, graduated from the same UVA the same year that I did. So, we've got that going for us too, this year with the Pacers. I think we've got the magic going this year.
I'll take it.
Uh, one thing I wanted to comment on is, uh, I know the budget, you've got some, uh, heavy lifting to do. Uh, every, well, the last two years, I've heard of three million dollars going to the reuse authority from City of Lawrence, property taxes. And I don't know if that was an old deal that was cut by, uh, some guys that benefited unfairly. I don't know why it's still continuing. Um, the reuse authority seems to have, uh, run its course. I mean, all the Fort Harrison, former military base, seems to be developed. So, I'm not sure why the city of Lawrence would provide three million dollars of its property taxes to, uh, the Fort Harrison reuse authority. I don't see a, I don't see a, I don't see any use for the city of Lawrence to spend that much money. The, uh, another issue that's come up is, um, at the dog park. That's my favorite topic to talk to you folks about. Uh, done a good job putting down some new seed, watering it, seems to be growing, and, uh, that's all well and good, but if you go to the dog park, you'll see that there's, uh, there are pine trees there. And the pine trees have brown spots about four feet up, which, if you look at Counselor Mazur, that's almost up to her head, um, off the ground. And that's because of careless overspray of toxic pesticides, toxic herbicides. To kill a pine tree takes something uniquely special. So, I don't think our park employees, despite their good intentions to keep the weeds down or whatever they're doing there, are being very mindful of the M S D S's, the material safety data sheets. If we're gonna have a cluster of cancer in Lawrence because of just silly, irresponsible spraying of pesticides, herbicides, what have you, I think that falls on all of us. So, I'm here to say something's wrong at the dog park, and it needs to be addressed, because people have complained to me about getting hives, 'cause dogs will run past these trees with the poisons on them, run up to little kids, uh, lick them, you know, cuddle them, sleep in their beds. It's just not a good scene, it's not a good scene. And we've petitioned the prior administration not to have herbicides sprayed there. We petitioned this administration not to have herbicides sprayed there, and it just falls on deaf ears, and I don't understand why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, real briefly, um, I know my property, that I have, my retirement home is down in a very rural area. I planted a bunch of, you know, sizable pine trees, and about four feet up, I had the same thing, and it was the deer, you know, rubbing their antlers, I guess, is what the locals were telling me. So, if what you're saying is true with the, you know, chemicals, that's a concern for the kids and the, and the animals. I totally agree. But there's always the possibility, maybe it's the deer doing it. But I'm not, I'm not a nature person.
Come out to the dog park, and you'll notice something really strange looking, because it's in spots, and it's where they've sprayed the weeds before, so I've seen it happen.
Yeah. Is it inside the fenced area?
Yeah.
Oh, well, deer, yeah, deer can jump over the fence, 'cause they do that at my place too. But anyway, it's just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the response.
Would anyone else like to speak? Meeting is adjourned.